All right, it is 7:00 on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, here at Albernett City Hall. This is our regular council meeting for the Council of the City of Albernett. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to please rise as we do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I will ask for a roll call.
Counselor Trump. Counselor Bozenberg.
President.
Counselor Shantz.
President.
Counselor West.
President.
Counselor Myers.
President.
Please let the record reflect that we have a full house and a forum to conduct business tonight. With that, I would seek approval of the agenda. Any adjustments, changes, edits to the agenda?
Not that I know of.
All right, then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Shantz, seconded by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is the Sheriff's report. We don't currently have that. If they show up, we will recognize them when they get here. Otherwise, I will make sure that gets emailed out to council once we have the official in hand. But just know if we have any questions, we'll get ahold of Major Poston. Need anything? All right, so we're going to move right into our public hearings. So the first public hearing is for a proposed ordinance amendment for our property maintenance ordinance. If you guys could just sign in for me, please. There's one right there on the desk. Appreciate it. All right, so just so everybody knows how public hearings are going to work tonight is council is here to listen to understand, to get your perspectives. Any questions can be directed at me, and then I will open those to council once I've had an opportunity to respond. But for the most part, we are going to listen to understand. So the first, as I mentioned, is for the ordinance amendment for property maintenance. We do have proof of publication for these public hearings. So for property maintenance, the change that is being made is that we are going to hand administration over to Lynn County Building Department to be our code enforcement official, whereas today, all of that falls to the city. And we don't really have the authority, per se, or the manpower to really stay on top of any property maintenance issues that we happen to have in town. So we appreciate their expertise, their certifications that they carry, and their workforce that they have that can do those for us. So are there any public comments, questions on the property maintenance ordinance amendment? Clerk, did we get any written comments?
Aye, Moira.
All right. I would seek a motion to close the public hearing.
To move.
Moved by Trump, seconded by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, public hearing for the proposed ordinance for our housing code. So this will be a new ordinance, which is why it's not listed as an amendment, similar to property maintenance. This will be, the code enforcement official will be Lynn County Building Department. So this does come with our registration and inspection schedules, fees, and checklist for landlords. And then that, again, is all run by the Lynn County Building Department. Any appeals would come back to the city. So we do still have control in that way. Are there any questions or comments from the public? If you have a list in front of me that I will recognize, but we'll start with any open comments, questions on the proposed ordinance for the housing code. All right, hearing none, we'll move to the written comments. First question is Cedar Rapids requires landlords to attend an annual meeting. Does Lynn County require that? No, there is no annual meeting requirement. And because we will follow Lynn County's ordinance, then there is none in Albernett as well. Next question is define landlord and tenant. Does a resident who's resident is a first-degree relative of the owner constitute a landlord/tenant? For example, if I own a house and my adult child lives there, not me, am I a landlord? The way we, as the city, will identify landlords is if the owner on the deed, according to the assessor's site, does not match the name on the water bill. So the name on the water account that doesn't match who owns the house, that's how we would identify landlords. Does anyone else have comment on that? That's how it's done today. With our new accounting system with QuickBooks, there's a really nice way where you can identify that, and then you can embed the accounts under the owner and identify who is registered on the water account. So we'll be able to keep track of the variances. When will this ordinance go into effect? So generally, we are required to do three readings of an ordinance. The council has the right to waive the second and third readings, but I would recommend that we at least go to second reading. So at this stage in the game, we're going to be at least, does that make it February? I mean, it's February before this would go into effect. There was a request for a paper copy of the fees that was provided. Why and what is the annual registration fee? So those fees are set by Lynn County. So the annual registration fee, according to the schedule, is for a single-family dwelling. There's a $40 registration fee. For multifamily, it's $40 plus $10 per unit. So if you had a three-unit apartment building, it would be $70 for the annual registration fee. And that, I'm sure, is to help offset the costs. They have to have personnel on staff to run the program, and so that helps offset the cost for them.
So will that be billed by the city, by the county, or are we responsible for remembering to pay it?
Let me check. You are not responsible for remembering to pay it. I'm going to flip in my packet here to the 28E. I believe all payments come to the city, and then we cut a collective check to the county. So that is outlined in our 28E agreement with the county. Yes, applicant fees are to be paid directly to the city. Monthly, the county will bill the city for all rental services performed within the city.
So Albernett does not give any of that money and go straight back to the county, basically?
We could add, so the county sets their fees. We can add additional fees if we so choose. We're not looking to do this to make a profit. We're not looking to do this to make sure our rentals are safe and up to code.
Is there a reason that you guys are pushing to have this? I mean, there's no, we haven't had any complaints, you know, as far as rental properties?
So I would say, this is actually, it's a new program. So Lynn County just started offering this outside of, or to the incorporated areas of Lynn County. And while we maybe don't have issues now, as the other cities around us adopt this, my concern, I'm not going to speak for us to counsel, so I'll allow you all to speak as well. My concern is that the landlords that didn't abide by the building codes, didn't maybe run the most tidiest of rentals, are now going to find Haven and Albernett as rentals become available because we don't run this program. And say, Centerpoint, Robbins, all have these codes in place. I don't want to be the line in place for those landlords that don't want to follow the codes.
I think that's pretty much all the rental apartments and stuff in town are owned by the same people, owned them for the last 30 years. So it's not like we're having, you know, a bunch of apartments being built here that are substandard or...
Yeah, but any house in town can be rental. It doesn't have to be the multifamily. It could be, it could be any of the brand-new houses. It can be turned into rentals. So really, we need to protect Albernett, the residents. And frankly, it's also protection, in my opinion, it's protection to our landlords as well against any false claims. Because if the county comes in and gives you that certificate of inspection, then that helps you fight against any false claims from any tenants that you might have. Anyone else have comment on that, why we want to implement this program?
I mean, even non-rental houses, having them, are having the rental homes up to, you know, up to a code is only going to maintain and help the property values of residents. Help prevent it from going into disrepair, et cetera. Plus, it also provides a structure for any type of grievances. My thought on it is if it's not broke, don't fix it. It's hard to fix if it's not broke.
The, it said in the paper here that there are 74 rental properties in Albernett, and I have a hard time finding 30. But, you know, it's not like we're, I don't know, at least not that I know of, anyway. There's 20 actual apartments. You know, there's got to be 50 houses that are for rent in Albernett. I don't know. It just seems like the number is inflated quite a bit. I mean, there's nobody that can find an apartment to rent in Albernett, so. My opinion, I guess.
Appreciate that.
If it's not intrusive, my name's Eric Guchman. I'm a landlord in Cedar Rapids.
I'll go carry you, you're more than welcome.
Yeah, my name's Eric Guchman. I'm a landlord in Cedar Rapids and Marion. I didn't come for this business, but I'm aware that it's coming down the pipeline. I'm also the president of the Wellington Heights Neighborhood Association. Wellington Heights and Cedar Rapids is the southeast side, if anybody's familiar with that term. And what I've seen is that when you have places that don't see the light of day, somebody can be holed up in there for quite some time, and it can get really bad. And you don't realize it necessarily from the outside. If they keep the grass mowed, you can have a lot of unhealthy things that can happen. And by the time you realize it, it's really too late. The structure of the building can get in real bad repair if nobody ever goes in there. And it can become, not just unhealthy for the person, but then that's the type of space where you end up having just more crime. But having the inspections in Cedar Rapids and Marion gives a chance for, you know, for somebody to walk through there at least every, whatever it is, five years or three years. And I personally see a lot of value in that. Because of Wellington Heights and Cedar Rapids, there's a lot of these problems.
Thank you.
What is the county's inspection, how often do they do it?
I believe it's every two years. Once you get the certificate of inspection, whatever they call it. The housing inspection certificate, it's good for two years.
Mayor?
This conversation is jogging my memory to Dan's point of we haven't had a complaint yet. We did have a house that was a rental that was horrible to the point where it had to be gutted to be a livable home again. And it wasn't that long ago, about five years ago. It was a situation where, just like Eric stated, as long as the grass was mowed, you didn't realize what was going on. And I got in that house shortly after the tenant was finally evicted. And, you know, they were starting the rehabilitation, and it was, it was the most disgusting thing I've seen.
But the landlord fixed it on his own?
No, he sold it. It was overwhelming. He sold it for next to nothing, and somebody else...
Somebody else fixed it?
Somebody else fixed it, yeah.
Without having Lynn County look at it or nothing, other than inspecting?
If she'd have kept paying her rent, it would have gone up in smoke, I'm telling you. If she'd have just kept paying the rent, but that was the final straw, the rent finally stopped coming. And so then she got evicted, and they finally found out how bad it was in the house, so.
So protects the landlords also?
I feel like it does.
That's why, I mean, we're just trying to be proactive on it, you know, and looking. I'm not a fan of having, I had apartments that I rented to, for, and had to have Cedar Rapids come out and inspect it for...
Because of rental support, financial support?
They were helping pay the rent for a lady that lived in one of my buildings. And they come out, and the aerator on the sink in the bathroom didn't aerate properly, so they had to have that fixed. And just stupid stuff that is ridiculous. But, you know, it's just, I'm just afraid that's what's going to happen here myself. I mean, an aerator is not a big deal.
There is a checklist. The focus is on safety items, handrails, smoke detectors, outlets, those types of things. And there is that appeal process that comes back through the city.
So how do we get a copy of the checklist?
I'm happy to provide that as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
I think they mail it when you're due for inspection. They, I own, I own all properties, so I'm familiar with it. They mail you a checklist?
They may be available on Lynn County's website, I'm not sure.
I would think it'd be very similar to how Marion does it, so...
Yeah, Cedar Rapids and Marion are very similar. Marion's better, by the way.
Just a quick note, I also want to thank the city clerk for responding very quickly to my request earlier this week.
Anyone have, there's one last question on the sheet. I don't want to stifle the conversation. So my last, the last question is, how is the inspection schedule set? And do tenants need to be present? So it is every two years, unless there's a failed inspection. Then you have it scheduled to have them come back once that's been fixed. Someone needs to be present, and Lynn County will give 24 hours notice from when that inspection is being scheduled. And I believe you can schedule. So I do know for building inspections, you schedule with the county, and they still give 24 hours notice that they're coming. So all of that's online, is to schedule your inspections.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments related to the proposed ordinance for housing code? All right, hearing none, I would seek a motion to close the public hearing.
To move.
Moved by Trump. Seconded by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, on to the mayor's report. I don't have much this month because it's all on the agenda, as you can see. But I would like to give a public, he had to leave, unfortunately, for this very reason, a public thank you to our fire department. They've had a heck of a month, a lot of calls. They're putting in a ton of time keeping us safe. I appreciate them. I believe the weekend of, before Halloween, they had three fire calls, including a house, and at least one medical, all within about 24 hours. So they've been extremely busy, and considering they do this as volunteers, I just really appreciate that they're always there. And he sat down here for about five minutes, and then his pager went off. So hopefully, they are safe tonight and keeping everyone else safe. That is all from the mayor's report. I will move to council reports and start with Counsel Myers.
Nothing to report.
Counsel West?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Now we'll move on to citizen comments. We have two types of comments in the City of Albernett. Those for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. If you do wish to speak, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and you will have five minutes to address the council. So are there any comments for agenda-related items? Non-agenda-related items? All right. We'll move on to written reports. We'll start with the fire department. As I mentioned, Chief Graham had to leave. So I'll go ahead and run through that. They have 13 calls for service in October. You have those there, everything from medical to football standbys, carbon monoxide in the city, neutral aid for Central City, a house fire in the township. They've done medical training with the Centerpoint ambulance. They put, the new hose that we ordered has been put on the trucks, and then it got quickly taken off the trucks for the fires they had. They've welcomed one new member. Truck number 135 is no longer applicable, and that is an agenda item later for this evening. They did host trick-or-treating. It was a lot of fun to see all the kids come in. It happened to be a rather warm evening, so the warm beverages didn't go over until the sun went down, and then everyone seemed to come back for those. So that's always a fun event. And I do know, I was present Monday night for their meeting, and Steve was re-elected chief. I believe that's a two-year term, so congratulations to him. Due to the busy month that they have, they are going to need to order defibrillator pads. So they'll be giving that information to the clerk to get those ordered. And then they're looking to apply for a grant from St. Luke's for a defibrillator. If we have any questions, we'll get those to Chief Graham at a later time. So I will recognize Public Works.
I don't believe I really have anything to add to my written report. If anybody has any questions, we did get started trimming the big ash tree at the old fire station. That thing is a monster. But hopefully, we can keep it under control before the new electronic sign shows up. That's the goal of that project, so. We got one level of haircut down, and we're going to trim her down a little tighter, though, so.
Did they have any updates on the sign? No, probably not that big of a deal.
I'm still waiting to hear.
And I failed to thank both Guy and Jim the day of that fire outside the township. They were on it to make sure the pumps were on and running so that those trucks could be filled. They ran for 10 hours straight, this haul of water. So thank you for making yourself available. And Counsel Myers also got a shout-out for assisting the firefighters as they filled at the end of your driveway. Appreciate your hospitality. Any questions for Public Works? All right. He'll breeze through the clerk's report. He is unable to be with us this evening, but he gave us a very comprehensive report to help fill the gap. Sure you all got through that, so are there any questions for the clerk or treasurer's report? There is information in the treasurer's report that we'll talk about later for funding for both the city hall project as well as the fire truck. Any questions on city clerk or treasurer's report? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Any changes, additions? I do see one note, and I totally missed it. The minute should be from our October meeting. Temper's listed on there.
Oh, listed, okay.
Yes, the correct minutes are in your packet. So we'll just make a quick amendment to the agenda to reflect that the minutes are from October 13th council meeting, which is what is in your packet. Other than that, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Myers. Seconded by Shantz. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, first item under new business is Gibby's license renewal, his liquor license. I do believe there is one change, in that he has applied for outdoor service as part of his license, so that he doesn't have to request a special event permit every time he wants to have an outdoor event. That is how Fuller's is today as well. So he was advised that that's easier than having to come to us. That would be the only change. Otherwise, this is just an annual renewal.
Yes, yeah, very, that is simple and just that one change, yes.
I'd seek a motion to approve Gibby's annual liquor license renewal.
I make a motion to re-apply.
Motion by Bozenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, street finance report. As Chris noted in his treasurer's report, there is nothing of note. I believe this was sent as a separate attachment, so it's not in your packet.
Yes.
But there is nothing of note, and it's all as expected. I believe he briefed you on the reports. Any comments?
No, it's, the big thing is if you're going to spend street money, you got to put it on streets. You do that, why?
And we're good to go?
Right. Good to go.
Any questions on the street finance report? Seek a motion to approve? Moved by Shantz. Seconded by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Annual finance report. Similarly, nothing of note. There was, I'm going to pull that one up. We were over on, in the general funds. We were over in the general fund by like $3,000, so nothing, nothing really of note there. Any questions on the annual finance report? All right, I'd seek a motion to approve. Moved by Myers. Seconded by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to discuss CDBG grant application. And we will recognize Tracy from ECICOG. Eric, right, is it Eric? And Mr. Sherman. The floor is yours.
Hey. I didn't know if, we basically had kind of a little overview of the proposals. I don't know.
I have it to you right now. It's got a change.
So can I, so I'll just talk a little bit about the CDBG process. So, you know, the Lynn County was a, well, the state of Iowa was awarded duratio funds, disaster funds, $57 million. And then dictated that, the state dictated that 80% of those have to be spent in Lynn County because of the impact that we had in Lynn County from the duratio. So those funds, the vast majority of them, I talked to Guy a little bit because they have some they're going to make available for generators and tree canopy. But the vast majority is for the creation of housing. There's some that's set aside for rehab housing, but the vast majority is for creation of housing, both owner-occupied and renter-occupied. So Eric had reached out because he was looking at potentially doing a project here. So with the CDBG program, the way it works is that it has to be a city application. It will really be developer-driven or contractor-driven, or, you know, however, whoever it is that's doing it. It will really, the project will really be driven by the information that they provide. However, the city is the applicant. You have to be a city or county to apply for the funds. ECICOG was brought into this early on because we write a lot of CDBG applications. Right now, out of my housing department, we have 11 that we're administering. So what ECICOG normally does with CDBG applications is we write them without charge for communities. I don't know honestly if we have done one for you guys, if we've ever done one for Albernett before. Because it can be for water sewer, it can be, you know, for a lot of different things. But housing happens to be my area. But, so we normally write the applications, we don't charge for that. And then, just that we ask that the cities agree to have us administer it if it's awarded funds. The amount that is paid to us is paid out of the grant funds. You are not required as a city to put any money toward the CDBG application at all. Now, it may make it more competitive, because one of the things that's going to happen is we are, the City of Cedar Rapids will be doing their own applications, and I think they have several. And then we're doing them for any of the communities, or the county, and any of the communities outside of Cedar Rapids. So, I strung off because I saw CDBG Dr., and I didn't see my name, and I was upset. But anyway. I'm kidding.
You got to send me an email, Tracy. Put your name and lights if you just send me...
Gosh, I think I send you emails all the time, you poor man. But anyway, so we will write all the applications that we do to the best that we can. I do not like to not get a project funded. So we'll just, you know, we'll try to do the best that we can to get them funded. The state, though, has criteria that they're going to look at. There's a lot of things that these guys have to meet in order to be able to do the project and to have it score well. I know that they're here to talk to you about ADU. I know that they're here to talk to you about ADUs and to show you what the project is. So one of the, one of the issues is gonna be in your zoning ordinance right now, from what I understand, you don't allow for ADUs, accessory dwelling units, sorry. So the way the state has told us is that, that process can be, in process, however, that would be like if a piece of ground was zoned for residential, you know, one unit, one to four, and you're gonna propose something that's five to seven or something. They wanna know that that project has the support from the community and that it is going to eventually, like you don't have enough time, because with this particular, with adopting a zoning ordinance to cover ADUs, that's gonna require a public hearing process, and so your three readings and all of that. So, so they just wanna know, though, that you are going to be open to doing it, that you're going to be open to allowing it, and that it's gonna be approved, because that will be one of the things that they'll look at. It will probably not be considered very strong if that can't be demonstrated to them. So, the way the CDBG Dr. applications are due by the end of December, you guys meet once a month, correct?
That is correct.
So you have to have a public hearing for the application, there's a bunch of stuff we have to do. We will make sure you have everything that you need for your public hearing. You'll be doing a community development and housing needs assessment, which is not a big deal, it's more of a formality, but it's something that we have to do. We would do that at the public hearing process, and then we would also, and this is for the application itself, and then we would also do all of the formal stuff that we have to do. You also have to have a fair housing plan, which we will do as well, and we have to do that at your council meeting as well. So there's several things that you have to do. What our job is, is to make sure that you have everything done to be able to submit a CDBG application. How strong it is is gonna depend on these guys, because it's their project and what they're, you know, gonna do. So, and so that's why I'm here really, is to just explain to you that process. You would need to then, I'm guessing, I think I figured out that the first of December is on a Thursday, so it would be the eighth of December is your next meeting. So that may be the meeting that you have to have all of the application information to consider, unless you schedule something special. The applications themselves aren't due until December 30th.
Does that deadline ever get moved out? Or is that a hard deadline?
The.
For the applications?
Well, it's interesting you ask that. They've moved it once already, well, informally telling me what they thought it was going to be. And then they've recently, they're upgrading the iowagrans.gov where we have to go in and enter everything, and it happens to probably be that week that your council is meeting, which is not a huge deal, except we have other ones that are having council meetings the next week. And so, we are not gonna have access to it for 10 days at a time when it's sort of crucial that we do. So they're talking about maybe moving it into early January, but would probably only be moved out a week or 10 days, not past that. But we have not, that's, we've been told that informally, but we have not been informed of that, that that's gonna happen for sure. And I know, I just checked my email tonight before I left, and I didn't see anything yet that gave me any indication that they're moving it out, so.
So I will say, Tracy, and I communicated this over email, so it won't be a surprise, I'm not gonna ask council to give their approval on anything that's not gone through the public process, that's why that hearing would be in place. So we can't commit to anything tonight. I would leave it, you know, I'll wait until their presentation.
Yeah.
I'd leave it to them. With this being on the agenda, I believe we could set a public hearing with this agenda item. But it also would take time for us to get that ordinance drafted and I.
So, the public hearing for the application, you'll have to pretty much have everything set. It is not something where you're gonna have a public hearing and you're gonna decide whether you approve this project.
Oh, no, I understand that, it's for the ordinance change.
Will be.
The public hearings for the ordinance change, yes, I understand that.
So the public hearing for the application will already be then, that everything is set, right? That it's, that we're doing the process of having a public hearing for the application because we're gonna be submitting it. Because at that public hearing, you as a council are going to be approving the application being submitted to the state. I don't care one way or another. I mean, you know, I mean, I really don't. It's up to you guys, what you wanna do for CDBG, and maybe these guys don't care whether it's CDBG Dr. funds coming into it, but I'm just telling you.
It just seems like a very tight timeline if we need to make an ordinance change.
But I don't know if it needs to be an ADU necessarily, and we've talked with, I have personally an application with the city of Mount Vernon, and what they're gonna do is offer support, even though they haven't adopted an ordinance that would allow the, my particular project to be built yet. But then I would have three years to build, and so then I'll enter that window. There will be a little bit of risk in my end of holding ground. So in this case, there's a couple of different ways of doing this. One way would be ADU, the second way would be rezoning to multifamily, and the third way would be to subdivide the lots and provide an easement for access. So there is multiple ways to build this, you know, I mean.
I think what they're really talking about, though, is just the willingness to go forward, not actually making the change right now, just showing the.
Well, but she's saying we need to actually give approval that this would pass.
Well, yeah, because I'm telling, yeah, and this is, I'm hearing this for the first time from Eric, but, but you're not gonna have a competitive application if.
I understand that, but I'm not gonna have council approve something that's not gone through the public process.
No, 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 I'm not asking you to do that at all, that's not what I'm saying. Yeah, that's not what I'm asking you to say. I'm just saying to you that you will go through a process of submitting an application for funds that will maybe likely not get. It won't, it won't score very high if what has happened is there hasn't been any public process. And so whatever you're saying, say to them, because they're the ones that are the, they're the ones that are invested in it. I will only do, I'm here for you guys, I'm not here for anybody else but you guys, so I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Joe, did you have questions?
Yeah, Tracy, would you go off, we have changed the ordinance, if this is gonna proceed. You said about a fair housing plan, we'll need to develop that.
Yeah.
And what are the other items?
Oh, there's, there's, well, I guess I do have my list here. So this is the, I printed out all the questions on the application. I don't know if I sent this to you guys, I don't know if I did. But, so at your city council meeting, there would be a resolution of support for the application. That's basically just saying that, yeah, you're, you know, obviously you're submitting the application. A HUD disclosure form 2880, federal assurance, a signature form, developer assurance form, a DOV certification, a CDBG Dr. subrogation agreement, a fair housing and outreach plan, a contractor fraud checklist, a project delivery procurement, and a community development and housing needs assessment, in addition to the fair housing plan.
And that has to be, can that, is that part of this, if we get behind it, we work on these things over time, or is there a deadline for all those things?
No, those are required attachments to the application.
By the end of December?
Yep. Yeah, I'm gonna have fun in December, I can tell you. I kinda, I kinda hope they don't move the application out any further, because I just, at first I thought, okay, we get through Thanksgiving and that'll be the busy part. Now it's gonna be up to the end of December. Yes, so there's, but there are several things that have to be submitted with the application. I don't like cities to agree to submit an application unless they see all of those things, and so that's, like, I wanna be able to have those for the council when we meet about the application.
So how much of this do you help drive?
We drive all of it. Yeah. Yeah, the community development and housing needs and the fair housing plan, both of them. I would probably take a look at your, your plans, whatever you have already in existence. Your capital improvement plan, if you have one, just to see, because community and development and housing needs plan has to be what the city may have identified, what their community development and housing needs are for the general population, what they are specifically for people of low to moderate income, and then what projects you may have coming up that you're planning to do. That's all that is, it's not, it's kind of a formality, really. The fair housing plan is really, they've changed it a little bit, but things like being willing to have the poster of the fair housing, naming someone if there's a discrimination, who is that person at the city that they, people contact if they feel they've been discriminated against, things like that. And so with the CDBG Dr., I didn't mention, the CDBG, the CDBG Dr., at least 51% of the renters, and I don't know what you guys are thinking, but at least 51% have to be low to moderate income. So that income level in Lynn County, and I apologize, I don't have all of them memorized, but I know that a single person can earn up to $50,000 and qualify as low to moderate income. So a two-person household, it's probably about $53,000, $54,000 a year. So what, I don't know how many of their units they're proposing to do that would be, that would benefit that, but they have to have at least 51%. Yeah.
Any other questions for Tracy? Eric, you're up.
I was just gonna start by saying the runway for this was really short, and so this was announced in what, July?
Well, it was actually released.
Or August.
At the end of September.
Yeah, so we've also been doing.
You know, so, and they've been kind of, they had to submit everything to HUD to get it approved, and I think it was the end of September.
Yeah.
Or maybe it was the end of August, but anyway, it had, yeah, the runway's been very, very short. They actually wanted applications originally, they wanted them due at the end of November. And then the city of Cedar Rapids complained, and I was really grateful they did, because I didn't know how my small towns, who maybe only meet once a month or twice a month, how in the world are they gonna get any of this done? You know, it's different when you have communities who meet every week, or, you know, in the county's case, a lot, and so, anyway. Yeah, it's been a short trying to, yeah, and we're just trying to, I mean, that's who we are, we're here for communities, that's what we do. So we're just trying to, if there's a potential for a project that you guys wanna do, and this is a source of funding that these guys can get to do it, and you're in support of that, then we'll, you know, we'll bust ourselves to get done what we need to do, so.
Do you have to give us a little on your project?
So essentially what we have is Dan already has site control or owns three parcels that could fit a second unit. As far as the mechanism for a second unit on these parcels, whether it be subdividing and an easement, rezoning to multifamily, or doing something, some communities do ordinances for accessory dwelling units, basically allowing a second dwelling unit on a single parcel. So either way, however that gets sliced, there's multiple ways to get that accomplished. But what this would be is infill development, meaning that, or basically meaning that it's using existing services. You don't have to put in any new roads, it just increases the tax base on the existing infrastructure. And my understanding is that the city of Albernett has an influx right now of kids going to the schools. Seems like the Albernett school system is very desirable, but it seems like Albernett's housing stock is not growing at a pace that could absorb, you know what I mean, this influx of people. So you got people busing in, and as opposed to new ground construction where then the city would take on the liability of those, those roads, those sewers, this would all be sites that you're already plowing the roads. The specific style of building is challenging for this. One of the units has to be ADA wheelchair accessible, and so that's what's proposed, is one of the units would be a cottage on a slab, so that would be handicap accessible. One of the units has to be either hearing or visually impaired accessible, and so the semantic of, you know, which one we choose, we haven't totally ironed out yet. And then some of the requirements that Tracy alluded to have to do with energy efficiency. These would be likely the most energy efficient things built. I mean, yeah, in Albernett, I mean, by a mile. They're so energy efficient that it actually like, some of the ratings are challenging because they get so energy efficient. I mean, you could practically heat one of these things with a space heater. Just because of, the state has rolled out a Green Streets criteria that basically spells out like all of the energy add-ons. There's also additional funding for stormwater management, so all of the water, all the water from a one and a quarter inch rainfall event would have to be kept on-site. There's additional funds if we wanted to do a two and a half inch rainfall event, I don't think that that makes sense in this scenario. There's additional funds to do things like solar or some sort of like a tornado shelter or retro shelter that kind of FEMA specs out. And so some way or another, there's gonna be kind of a combination of these add-ons. And then the projects themselves are modest. These aren't gonna be little Taj Mahals, these are gonna be quaint, efficient rental properties. One of the things that works efficiently is to put an apartment or rental dwelling, dwelling in general, over top of a garage. And so that's what's proposed for two of the three. As you can kinda see with the plans, these plans were developed with ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, that the supervisors approved in the spring, and so this is kind of like piggybacking on that. And then the incentive for the CDBG Dr. would be $70,000 per dwelling unit, and then an extra $15,000 for either the solar, the stormwater management, or the, or the storm shelter. None of these at 7% bank interest will pencil out without the subsidy. In fact, they'll probably be tight even with it. The additional energy requirements are glorious. So, yeah, these are all plans, these are plans either that I've already personally built or am also proposing to build in places like Mount Vernon or Cedar Rapids. So you know what I mean, they've gone through quite a bit of vetting as far as that goes, they've just never been built to this energy efficient standard before, which has been really challenging. It micros it down to things like low VOCs in like the paint and all of the, all of the surfaces, and recycling, the recycling plans for the debris for the, from the sites, I mean, there's a lot. And basically, I think the bigger question is just with the community, as I understand it, there's just a need for housing. I don't think that that's unique to Albernett, but you know what I mean, it seems like Albernett probably got one of the bigger influxes, you know what I mean, more recently, from, from them more in particular. But, yeah, it's mostly just a question of you've got this thing happening to the community. This is something that's not very large, but you know what I mean, does like move towards addressing it. The other thing with these plans, if the city wanted to like have a bigger conversation about an ordinance for accessory dwelling units or something to basically relax the standard or change the standard, then this would be something that could be scaled. But I think for this purpose, that's not, this isn't like meant to be like, if you wanna have a bigger conversation, that would be a totally separate thing for a later date.
It's a very concentrated scope.
Yes. There is one other thing that wasn't mentioned in here, which is something that both Dan and Guy have referenced. There's another parcel that's not described in this application that is currently vacant. I don't remember the address offhand.
It's on the corner of Roosevelt and Third. I talked to Kevin about maybe selling that, it sounded like maybe he had some interest in selling it.
That would be one as. That would be one as well, if there's, I mean, it would be very tight, but if he can get a purchase agreement signed within the next few days, you know what I mean, it might be possible to loop that into this. You can do up to seven dwelling units before Davis Bacon kicks in, and everybody I've talked to has said that once Davis Bacon kicks in, nothing pencils, unless it's a big, big, big multiplex with other incentives tacked on top. So you can do up to seven as one application, but then it's like an efficient package, but no.
How many are you looking at on that potential site?
It would be probably like a three plus.
Three.
On Roosevelt and Third, you said?
Yeah.
You still have to have in the application at least one unit that's ADA wheelchair accessible and at least. You still have to have, in the application, at least one unit that's ADA wheelchair accessible, and at least...
Well, we've learned this week. I know, see, this is the thing, right? It changes all the time. Federal regs say that you have to, it's a minute, that applies if it's a minimum of five units.
Okay.
So, but I'm used to working with the state, I mostly work with state dollars. I mean, it starts out at the federal level, goes through the state, and then you're always subject to how the state interprets the federal rules. So they came out and said for the CWGDR exactly what Eric was saying for the requirement, we learned this week, which I haven't even been able to tell you because I had foot surgery, which is why I'm... But, but anyway, I haven't even been able to tell you that. They have decided that it does not apply, however, they would look at projects more favorably if they had a unit, you know, if you met the criteria, however, it is not a hard requirement like they said before.
Yeah, this has been super dynamic, and, I mean...
It's not, it's, it changes. We just got an email today of something else I questioned, because when I normally do a CWG application with cities, there's normally a list I give the city clerk, these are all the things we're gonna cover, I'll provide all the forms for the council packets, blah, blah, blah. And it all has to be a public hearing process. Well, the only thing they had told us up to this date that the public hearing was required for, for this application, was that Community Development Housing Needs Assessment. But one of the other communities asked me, well, if we set the public hearing, what should we say? And I decided to cover my basis, so I said, for the Community Development Housing Needs Assessment and the application, just in case. Well, today I got an email that said, yeah, you do have to have a public hearing for the application itself, which they had not at all made it seem that we did, so, anyway, here we are.
My understanding is IEVA has had turnover of three of the upper level positions in the last couple of years, and it feels like the fruit bleeding this is...
I think he's really good, actually, he's very detailed, but I think what part of it is, is that, it always changes with the disasters, it feels like, like, you know, it just, it just does. And I know, I remember the first disaster I worked on was the nineteen ninety-three flood. And it would, you know, I know that dates me, but that's true. And so, and so I remember, things have changed over time, just, everything is a little bit different, so, yeah. Anyway.
I, I do echo that, you know, we have a housing, I don't wanna call it shortage, but we're currently at a housing deficit, uh, in the City of Alvernet. There's no development being planned that I'm aware of, so I love that we're looking at alternatives. I've read up on the ADUs, I don't quite understand what our ordinance would need to be adjusted to, so we definitely have to do some research there. I will say if you pursue the other options, so whether it be a parcel split or rezoning, then parcel split's going to need a variance, because they won't be wide enough according to our... So that would be Board of Adjustments and/or a planning and zoning meeting, so. I mean, either way, there's a little bit of work to be done. Uh, ordinance is by far the most time consuming.
And also, um, we have ordinance estates, every, every dwelling has to have its own water and sewer tap. Hopefully you're figuring that in, the one property on Roosevelt, that'll be a little bit of a challenge, because you're gonna be crossing somebody else's property to get that in. So just wanted to throw that out there, so that that's on the table too. If you're gonna be tight anyway, that's, might drive your cost. You know, the other two shouldn't be a big problem, but...
Where are the other ones located?
Uh, one of them is right by the school.
The backside of the elementary. The house that's second deep.
The second deep?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah. The one that had the...
The two water meters in the one.
Um, so there's one there, and then Hartford's old house, Israel Roosevelt, two oh six Roosevelt. And then the other's on one thirty-third street, that's right, basically in front of my house.
So I think what it comes down to is that the, the need for housing, and then whether you want to try and apply for the CWG grant. I hope that we make it as painless as possible by providing everything, and I mean, that's what our job is. But at the same time, the, the funds will have to run through the city. You know, you'll have to, we'll prepare the requests and everything that will go to the city, we'll, we'll send things to the city clerk that will have to be processed, but it's still, all of the funds for the project will be coming through the city, and then being paid to the developer for the project. And not, I shouldn't say it that way, because it's probably, and I don't even know this, and I'm not sure if they've said this, maybe you remember, but I, it might be a reimbursement basis, not a, they give you the money upfront, that existed twenty years ago, but not anymore.
Is there any, um, I don't know how to say it, any backside to this? Let's say, an ADU, we go, we, the council goes for it, ADU gets built, a year later Dan says, you know what? I'm selling this place. Is there a requirement that that remains in, so the new purchaser then would have to maintain that dwelling as a separate entity, they can't just take it over and make it their man cave, or whatever? It would have to continue to be a...
The affordability period is twenty years, or fifteen years?
It's fifteen years for so many units, and then...
Fifteen years, I think, for five or less. And past five, I think, is twenty years.
Yeah, which means then that it has to remain affordable to the people, the income limits that you're agreeing to, that that's the, what you're going to do for fifteen years.
Which, to your point, I'd almost lean towards parcel split or rezoning versus trying to police.
Yeah, right.
An ordinance change.
Yeah, I don't know what the regulatory side of it would be, if, if, is someone gonna come checking two years from now? I mean...
He'll have to submit, um...
He'll have to send a report in, yeah, I figured it'd be something like that.
Yeah, yeah, actually, in the application, we'll have to state how Dan is going to follow up with that. And we're talking about that, what, you know, is that something we're gonna end up doing, you know, for the projects? We did get another email this week about that, in, in regard to, the grant will cover it for the time period that the grant is open, but once, once the grant is closed, up to that fifteen or twenty-year period then, the, the owner will still have to do it. But, um, you know, how that gets paid will have to come out of the owner, or the owner will have to do it.
I don't mean to be a naysayer, is this project something that will happen if you don't receive the grant?
No way.
No way.
You didn't even hesitate.
Or, I mean, I don't know, you could ask him, but I would almost...
Well, that's what started the whole process. Yeah, and they were willing to help me, so obviously I can't do this on my own, so.
Do you have a model application so we can see?
I don't have a model one, because you go online and it's not, um...
I was just curious, they are available, yeah?
No, actually, well, like, for instance, what we'll do, what I've done is set up one, because Benton County is also, Benton County is part of a, Benton Marshall and Tama get that other twenty percent of the funding that was set aside for Drayshaw. So I've sent up one for the City of Benton, just so I could go through the application itself. So now you see my coffee stain. But this is the application printed out, in a way, but there's a lot of dropdowns, like unless you answer a question a certain way, you're not gonna know that there's five more questions after it. So what I tried to do, and I mean, I could leave you, I can leave this with Guy, but what I tried to do is go through the application and list the questions. I highlighted the things that I wanted the cities or the county to note of things, you know, that will be required of you, but again, I, I tell folks all the time, don't freak out, because that's our job, is to make sure that these things are all done for the time that we have to do your city council meeting for the application. But, um, it's, you know, they're gonna have to say what the rent amounts are gonna be, um, does it require infrastructure? Are you applying for infrastructure? Because there's also money for infrastructure in support of, of housing, which of course this project will not require, which is, you know, a good thing, right? Because you're not gonna have to do that. Is it located in a flood plain? Is any demolition required? Does the developer own the site, or do they have an option to purchase? They can have an option to purchase, however, they have to have it purchased by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-three in order to, for it to be a viable application.
Once the timeline is, you said three years to expend the funds?
Yes, you do have to say what your timeline's gonna be. They're going to favor the projects that are going to be ready to go in twenty twenty-three, because that's just, they are working with the twenty nineteen flood down in southwest Iowa, and those projects are very slow to start, and so they're getting some heat from the feds. So they're wanting ours to get out of the chute, and so I think they're probably, that's one of their criteria they'll look at, is when are you proposing to do this? Yeah, so, um...
I'm gonna pause and see if council has any other questions, there's been a lot of information.
Yeah, and I don't think you've had a council meeting since all of this sort of happened.
No, I've been briefed by staff, uh, so I, I had a little information, but...
I know, I mean, so it's not like, you know, it's not that I waited to, uh, to come, it's just that...
You want to check copy it, or can I keep it?
I think you can keep it, because I'll just print it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So knowing that ordinance change is probably not gonna happen by the end of December, what are you looking for tonight?
Aren't they really just looking for at least the, the, they're not really looking for the ordinance to be changed, they're asking, they're showing, a show of support, right? Because they know it takes a while for an ordinance to be changed.
Well, it's more than show of support, I believe it's also essentially approval that it's gonna happen, and I won't ask council to make that, without the public forum.
This, this is only my gut, and I think what you're gonna have to do, that what we would have to do then, is show what the timeline is for approval, you know?
But if we don't need to make an order to change, if we can work through the other avenues?
Yeah, because I think you could just do a rezoning. And so, I think that it's just a letter of support, and I don't know if that's tonight, or maybe the next council meeting, if there's one in December.
In fact, one, one property is already R2.
Yeah.
So it doesn't even need to be touched, but...
So the only thing is, is I'm not a fan of working on stuff if you don't want to move forward. So that's the only thing, it's just that I would wanna know if I'm gonna start...
Well, it's that, you need to set a public hearing.
Yes, you need to set the public hearing, and then...
There is, there is action we would need to take tonight.
You would need to set the public hearing, and then I would just know then that Eric and, and I would start working on the information for the application, that he'd be providing me the stuff I needed. I think we'd wanna have some sort of timeline of, you know, you know, whatever approval process there's gonna be, that, that, what that looks like. I think that in the narrative, we can cover that, you know, there's a consensus, or I don't know if that's the right word that you wanna use with the city government, but, you know, support for the project, not anticipate, what they don't wanna see is that somebody submits an application, and then really, there isn't really any public support for it. Like, they have to go, they have to have a change that the public has a hearsay about, you know, that they can give public input, and then it doesn't happen. They don't want, they don't want to have projects like that submitted. That's the...
You've got rental property owners right here in town, besides Dan. Do you have an opinion, Harlan, Dan, I mean, about...
I'd say, like, we could definitely use more apartments.
You're, you're not having any stress renting yours if they...
No.
Yeah, that's...
We've got a waiting list.
Okay.
So at this point, I think it's, you know, pleasure of the council, if we support the project, and then I would say, I mean, we would have to set the public hearing for, mind me, it's about, for approval of the housing, planning, zoning code plan, I, what was it?
No, I would say, um, you would, if you're setting the public hearing for the development of the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment, that's what it was, and for the submission of a CWGDR application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. That's what I would say, and I think that will cover you to set it, and then the public hearing itself has about seven or eight items that I have to cover in it, in addition to the other stuff that I, that I was telling Joe about.
Pleasure of the council, is something we would like to pursue and carry forward to our December meeting? I mean, if so, I would also ask pleasure of the council as far as the, of the three options. Do we call a planning and zoning meeting? Do we call a Board of Adjustments meeting, or do we start working on the ordinance? Those would also be decisions I'd like to...
But there's a certain way we go through without doing an ordinance, right?
Correct, we can either rezone, so that'd be a planning and zoning meeting. He could split the parcels, but he'd be, wouldn't have the correct wits, and so that'd be a Board of Adjustments meeting, or we can, or we can do the ordinance.
So we pretty much have to agree to the public hearing, and one of those three options, most likely not the ordinance tonight.
In order to get those done, because we'd have to have a meeting of whatever board prior to our council meeting, so they can make their recommendation, and also then set the public hearing for our next council meeting. I don't like doing those as specials, uh, if we can avoid it, because I like to have the transparency of the regular time and place, and all that good stuff, if it can be avoided.
Or you say it's too much?
Dan, now, Dan, you, you tear down the other houses on there? You just remar... You're just...
It wouldn't affect the houses that are there. These are additional dwellings, residential, the one, two of them have garages, and the garages would come down, so one garage is...
Oh, okay.
Was the tree hit, and then Drayshaw, and kind of messed up, the roof skin works in it, and it, it kinda needs to come down anyway.
And then the cottage you're proposing goes, basically just goes in the backyard behind the house that's already there. That's the ADA accessible one, if you need to continue that way. But that probably, that property, you probably can't do the garage department, right? Because you can't get access to it, okay?
And that's the one I'd be concerned about, whether that can be split, and/or how you would...
That one's the one that's R2 anyway.
That one's R2, it's already zoned, right?
It's already zoned, correctly.
And as far as timing goes, if the council had the resolution supporter, supported this, it would be possible to start building that one, and then just phase the building to give time for the rezoning of the others. So, timing wise, it would be possible to still submit the application saying that Dan would be ready to break ground, you know what I mean, with the spring season, if it was awarded.
And I assume, Dan, you want the rezoning, because if you split parcels, then you've got surveying and engineering and the whole thing that goes into that, your end.
Be by far the easiest possible for this.
Can I ask you a quick question? You've got two separate parcels, not adjacent, but that is considered one project?
Yeah, this would be like a mixed site, uh, project, or mixed site application.
So if you were to acquire the empty lot, that would still be part of the same project?
Yes, yeah.
Wow, that's a great question. Because, I mean, it's been something that's been asked a million times on all of the CWGDR stuff, so...
For reference, the Green Streets criteria, which is kind of that energy efficient criteria, definitely leans itself towards these types of projects, but it's uncommon, in my experience, for the mixed site projects. A lot of times what happens is that, you know what I mean, in Cedar Rapids, somebody proposes a ten or twenty or thirty or forty unit apartment building, where it's all on one site. And I can see, reading through it, that that is harder, uh, to get approved. And so these types of projects is like what it's leaning towards, because they're infill, they're using existing services, um, and they're more...
Income requirements are easier to prove, and...
Yeah, and they're more residential scale, which is for Alvernet more appropriate, to have residential scale as opposed to, you know what I mean, some sort of big multiplex.
And I would tell you, in relationship to ADUs, and I'm not giving it up, because they didn't have very many, so I apologize about that, but I went to something last week, and AARP does a, the state ARP office is really promoting these, and part of it is, is to be able to allow for multi-generations, you know?
And that makes sense to me, but if we're looking at true rentals, where then you gotta have, yeah, sing family, that's a little bit different.
Yes, and that's, and that's exactly, they were talking about, um, that there aren't many communities that allow for them, um, if they're rental properties, but Cedar Rapids does. So, you know, there are, and, and he even said that at the state, that there's one community he knows of, and that's Cedar Rapids, and, um, but, anyway.
It is a way to...
It is a way to get some housing built more affordably, and, you know, on a very small scale, but still more units, right?
All right. I don't mean to cut this short, we do have a beast of an agenda. So if council, if there are any other questions, I'll entertain those from council, otherwise I would look for next steps.
Should we, you need board adjustment or rezoning or less probable?
Yes, and it sounds like rezoning is preferred, if that is what the council prefers.
Maybe split lots, most likely?
That'd be board of adj, if we actually, if he actually reparsals the lots, that's board of adjustments, because they'll be too small.
Right.
Just sold it to an R2, so it's a multi-family lot.
It's like the apartments.
But so it'd be like, two buildings on one lot, okay, multi-family, okay.
Yep. So then it'd be no different than our apartments that are connected. We could rezone it to a lot of multi-family.
And if we do move forward with this, it's for all three locations, correct?
And up to possibly five if the other.
Four locations, but.
Four locations, possibly five.
Five to six units.
Dwelling, dwellings. And you said like the, the ceiling on that is like six?
Yeah, seven, seven is the most you can do without Davis Bacon, and so.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be unwise to propose one that had eight or more units unless it was a big multiplex that had like layered incentives.
Well, I guess, probably, I mean, very good for the rezoning.
So make the motion to.
We should use the.
There, there's a need.
Here's a need, there's a need for it, so, anyway, we have to, you know.
So make the motion to have the, the hearing and move forward on the rezoning of the of the properties to accommodate the project.
So I'm gonna ask you to rephrase, so we have two action items, we would need to call a board of, nope, a planning and zoning meeting, they would make the decision on rezoning. So tonight, we, I don't even think that has to be official, does it? We can just ask that we.
Yeah, no, we just get them together and say, here's the object in front of you, and then they'll make a recommendation to you, which would go on the agenda before.
You know, I'm gonna ask for a motion for it anyway, I know you just said that, and I asked, but still.
All right.
So first and foremost, I would seek a motion to request a planning and zoning board meeting to consider the rezoning of two, two of the sites, because the vacant lot would have to be rezoned, but you don't, that's not finalized yet. So it'd be the two sites that are currently R1. So that is the motion that I am seeking right now. Just to call a planning and zoning meeting.
So.
I got a motion by Bozenberg, can I take your second? Second by Myers. Any further discussion on requesting a planning and zoning consideration for the rezoning?
If they deny it, are we gonna look at a possible next step then, as far as?
Our public hearing, we could say pending approval by the zoning. Should have the answer by the.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
They would present at the meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
So we just set the agenda accordingly.
Yep.
That's a good point, TJ. All their alternative then is to have it replatted, and we would have to, he'd have to take the risk with board of adjustments, because at that point he's gonna hit the deadline, so.
Yep, that's what I was pointing.
It's kind of all legs in one basket if we go with the rezoning route.
That'd be the cleanest way to start, though.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Second item would be to approve, and Tracy's gonna correct me if I missed something, up, to set a public hearing for the community development and housing needs assessment and application of a CDBG grant. Yeah, did I say it right?
You could say, you could say CDBGDR, because that's the disaster part.
C D B G.
D R.
Grant.
That's CDBG kind of space or dash DR.
And that would be set for our next regular meeting, which is Thursday, December 8th at 7:00 PM.
And would that need to be pending approval of the rezoning by the zoning commission? Because if they don't approve, there's no need to hold that hearing.
Um, I believe this shows our support for the application, and Tracy's gonna start her work, so she'll have it all ready. The hearing would be moved, we need to set so we can get it published.
Got it.
But we could, should we get the readout from planning zoning that they've declined, we could then skip it on the agenda, be like, well, that doesn't need to happen.
I just didn't know if we needed to put pending approval through them.
Say that last part. So, um, at our next council meeting, then we would get the readout from our planning and zoning board. If they've declined the request, we could then just skip that public hearing, it would no longer be needed. Or, I, we could continue to do it and potentially give a caveat of the parcel split, and still then show our support that could, could lead to an application. I don't clearly know the details as well as Tracy does, but I think the public hearing probably doesn't hurt anything.
No, and you have to have it advertised, so I mean, you need to, you need to have the public hearing, you need to make a decision on it.
It has to be published four to 10 days prior to the.
If you get, if you get P and Z together and they say no way, and then you get board of adjustments together and they say no way, then it's a moot point, and yes, we wasted the 50 bucks, put it in the paper, but that's all.
We skipped them on the agenda before, where we set them and then leave them.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't like something we had to tag a writer to that saying.
Oh, I don't.
That it would be.
We just address it at that meeting and we do fine.
You're gonna owe me no treats or something.
I hear it, and it doesn't happen, I'm not gonna be very happy.
We can, and here's, I, I don't expect too much trouble, but we could call the P and Z and try and get them in here as soon as, as soon as possible. If it does not pass them, we could get the board of adjustments in here before the next meeting too, and see if there's.
Well, we have that special meeting for P and Z's recommendation though, because that's gotta be public forum. Which that I don't mind doing, because that's private matter, so we can.
Yeah, but they can address it without, can't they? Can't they address the issue? Can, can it be put in front of the
Yes.
P and Z or the board of adjustments?
But for us to know if they decline, it's gotta be in public hearing.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I get that, but.
Or a public meeting.
But, you know, we could get, if they decline, we could get the board of adjustments ready and have their decision in the, in the back pocket before the meeting. And then P and Z comes in and says, no, we don't want to do this. Oh, by the way, we had a board of adjustments meeting, and they'd be okay with granting the variance to split the parcels. That's what I'm saying. It, it sounds reasonable if we can get everybody together, to me, that that could be in that.
Yeah, and you, you know, it's a challenge right now too, this time of year with Thanksgiving and people traveling.
And this is just sudden, you know, and it's not involved, but it's sudden, so everybody is gonna.
It's a scramble, yeah.
It's a scramble, for sure.
All right, so I have requested the motion to set the public hearing for Thursday, December 8th at 7:00 PM for the community development housing needs assessment and the support of the application of the CDBGDR grant.
So.
Moved by Myers, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. See you next month.
I gotta go, because I got stuff to do.
And I do have work to do. We appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
I don't wanna keep dropping it, okay.
All right, I'm gonna pause the agenda real quick. Welcome back, Chief. Good to see you. Um, I read your report, there weren't any questions, is there anything you wanted to add?
Thank you.
We talked about the tree lighting, and we're gonna play the ceremony zone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
So there's an attempt to work with the school to get a tree lighting ceremony as we've done in the past, and that was declined. Were there any questions for the chief now that he is back?
Well, I do want to thank Chris for catering on your house, however. This is about the gravel, and everybody else.
It's the least I can do. We will move on. 15E Resolution 2022-8, closeout fund 311 COVID-19, 312 Durachio, and 313 ARPA, and transfer funds to new capital project fund for CIP Fund 314. So this resolution is in your packet, it's short, so I will read it. Resolution 2022-8, consolidation of fund accounts. A resolution adopting the following consolidation of fund accounts policy for the City of Albert, be an additional resolved by the City Council of the City of Albert, Iowa, the following consolidation of fund, of fund accounts be adopted. Purpose of this resolution is to consolidate funds 311, 312, and 313 into newly created 314. Consolidation of these unused funds into a single fund, facilitate one account for accounting purposes. Adjusted, the money in those three accounts will be used for our capital improvement, primarily the city hall project, and so we're gonna put it all in one fund to make that easier to track.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Sean, second by Trump. Any further discussion?
Do we need a real call on the resolution?
Um, no, just ordinances.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, Resolution 2022-7, snow removal policy. So this is purely a formality. It's something we have probably should have done in years past, many ceramic communities, we borrowed this from the City of Robbins. It just kind of spells our, our process for the plowing of streets, when we go out, what kind of materials we use, whether it be salt or sand, who's responsible for what. The only thing of note is under Section 3, sequence of service, item number two, sidewalks. This is something that we will be building more detail into with the recodification project, as far as the owner's responsibility for clearing sidewalks. We won't have that done and finalized by this winter season. It's getting very, very close. I guess I should have given that update, we'll do that in the final comments. So, in order to facilitate enforcement of the sidewalk clearing ordinance, we have included the rate at which we will charge for clearing of sidewalks. So the rest of that, where it states it's the responsibility of the abutting property owner to remove the natural accumulations of snow and ice promptly from sidewalks, or if the ice cannot be removed to treat with, to treat the ice with sand, salt, or other non-slippery substance. If the property owner does not remove the snow or ice, or treat the ice within 24 hours after the deposit of accumulation, the city may have the snow or ice removed without notice to the property owner, and assess the cost against the property owner for collection in the same property, as the same manner as property taxes. That is existing ordinance. What we have added in this resolution is at a rate of $250 per hour with a one-hour minimum. We're not doing this for free, uh, there needs to be incentive, uh, but we also need to be able to enforce. We have several properties that don't clear their snow, and it's, it's hazardous, and I'd like to see us be able to make some movement on that this winter, as far as encouraging people to keep their properties clear. But the rest of that, it's all things we've been doing, we're just putting some, some formality behind it. Are there any questions on the snow removal policy? I would seek a motion to approve Resolution 2022-7. Moved by Trump.
Second.
Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, similarly, Resolution 2022-9, rules of conduct for city council meetings. These are all things that I think go well today. We don't have any problems that we're necessarily trying to address. However, it was a takeaway, unfortunately, he's not here to talk about it, but it was, this was a takeaway for the city clerk from one of his recent conferences that he went to, that it's just good to have those rules of conduct spelled out before you have any issues. If we do now happen to get someone to come in who's unruly, we have to ask to leave. We have this set versus making, versus it appearing as a retaliation for those actions. So I would just ask for your consideration. Any questions on the rules of conduct? Again, we, we've never had a problem, but should one arise, this gives us the opportunity to take action. There are no questions, I would seek a motion to approve Resolution 2022-9, rules of conduct for city council meetings.
So.
Moved by Trump, second by Bozenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, new business. H, discuss fire truck. Item number one is disposition of truck number 135. Chief, I'll recognize you, the truck is no longer on the road.
We went to a grass fire a while ago. The rain, it felt off there pretty much. Had a hard time stopping it. I drove it back to the town, turned in the fire station, big bang, big pot of smoke, and I don't know if you guys know, I was dead in front of the station for a couple of days before it got moved. You can go from there, because you worked on the rest.
Yeah, yeah, near as I can tell, that either head gasket out or there's a crack in the block or head. It will, it wouldn't start because of basically the cylinder was full of antifreeze, the oil was completely full of antifreeze, it was. Yeah, it's, it's pumping antifreeze into the oil, and it's 1988 and all the time, 80. I thought it, you know, doesn't matter, it's not a, not a vehicle that would be prudent for the city to spend money on, because once you open that motor up, it could be anywhere from a thousand dollars to four thousand dollars by the time you got it back.
Nickel time is for years.
Right, we spent four grand on brakes here, what, three, four years ago, and, yeah. Just because they were an odd style of brake that the average person couldn't work on, hard to get parts and et cetera, and it, it's just not a viable unit anymore.
So my, it's my understanding that the fire department's got some things they need to get out, radios and some other things, but I believe guys looking for permission to list on gov deals.
There is, it's a, it's a, it's not unique, back in the day they did it all the time, but there is another V8 on the truck, there's a Chevy engine that drives the pump, and it's viable, it can't make the truck move down the road, but, and there's, I'm sure the pump is, is fine, I'm sure there's other valuable things. The cab is immaculate, anybody who's trying to keep their 85, 80s Ford cab over truck on the road would love to have that cab, just hoping we can find the right audience, it's worth something, but I wouldn't count on, on much, so.
I was talking to the Simon's Fire, never really interested in it. I said, I don't know when, when or where, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
Who's interested in it?
Simon's Fire, Harley, they build party trucks.
Would it be a potential trade then, should we hold on this? Because I know you mentioned.
Uh, I don't know about that case.
Okay. You know what I was gonna say.
Well, as long.
I'll talk to the guy about it later.
We're not gonna have a new truck to put in that bay for a while, so we could even wait till the, the new year to sell it. I mean, I just, when it feel, when it seems like it's right, I just, I want permission to go ahead and list it.
Or if you have permission to do it, then if that's right, you can do it.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean.
Somebody could get rid of it.
Yeah. I tried to do a little research, there's nothing quite exactly like it out there. It seems like everything out there of its age might be running, but it's all way more beat up and in worse shape body-wise than ours is, so there's no real direct comparison that I found anyway, looking at gov deals and other, other areas.
So I'd seek a motion to approve, allowing Public Works to either list on gov deals and or offer for trade truck number 135 once a decision has been made on a replacement.
So.
Moved by Sean's.
Do we?
Do we mind by replacement?
Give me a second first.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion?
Do we want to?
Do you want to hang on to it that long?
Yeah, I mean, with the proven of other one, I would, I wouldn't go with the proven of another, a new one. I think I'd get rid of it, because it's no good to a certain size.
Right, till it'll replace it, because it could potentially be a trade, so if we find.
Yeah, if they'll take, if it has trade value with whatever we're, we're.
It's unlikely, but that's why I hate to only restrict it to gov deals, if we could potentially trade it. So that was my identification of replacement, if they'll put it in as a trade.
That's the only question.
Okay.
We're gonna wait that long.
Oh, it's not gonna hurt anything.
I knew if I tried to build two years out right now, if you went. If you went and got one built, which we're looking at the rocks.
Trying to find a faster.
Yes, but if you went to Pierce, you go find a fire truck, two years, get one built.
It's not hurting anything to let it sit there, so.
No. And that buys it for six months if you had a chassis. You don't have a chassis.
That's got a 429 Ford drive in the truck and a 454 Chevy in the, in the pump house.
I would probably buy a, you know, a 429 motor for $3,000, couldn't you?
Yeah, but this one never has run right ever since they tried to stick fuel injection on it, and I don't know if I'm ready to handle that. I don't know. If I could switch it back to carburetor, I'd be okay with that, but that's why they switched to fuel injection because they were having trouble with the carburetor.
Body shop works.
Well, we will accept offers tonight. Antique.
That's nice.
I'll throw in some Gatorade.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. H, sub bullet two, Set Limited Parameters for Purchase of New Tanker. So we did attend the fire department meeting this past Monday. Chief mentioned that he'd like to form a truck committee. Guy will be included on that. Part of that truck committee is they kind of have to know a rough budget on what they're looking at. Are they looking brand new? Are we look, you know, what's their range to kind of work? And then they'll go out and start, start their search. So in the Treasures Report, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's been a conversation yet with township about whether they have funds that can go towards this? Have they approached that subject yet?
I'll go mention that. We need to go, or we need to go.
We actually probably need to have an annual meeting with them anyway. I got thinking about that as I was leaving the fire department meeting, so we'll, you'll be invited to that, but we will.
I saw Scott Stick at voting, but the place of packs, I just left. Doesn't discuss.
Yeah, we can bring that up and have our annual meeting with them. So that's a very good point, that in addition to the funding we're about to discuss, that in previous discussions with the township trustees, they have mentioned that they have funds they would like to dedicate to a new truck. We have no commitment from them at this point.
When this truck's gonna benefit township.
Yes, especially if it's a water hauler.
Yeah.
Yeah. We are hoping for no fewer, I, I've mentioned this to your captain, we're hoping for no fewer than 2,000 gallons. That would increase. I'd like to go a little higher, but.
If we get at least 4,000 gallons, we can, altogether, we can lower the ISO into the township.
Well, nothing's gonna get smaller. There's gonna be more and more acres out there with more and more high-value facilities on them and high-value vehicles and things, so we're not going the other way, right?
So we currently have an equipment reserve, about 119,000, and in lost, we have nearly 400,000.
We have to be a little careful with the lost money, though, how we spend.
50% is for property tax relief, and the other 50% is for infrastructure improvements, which I would not consider as infrastructure, though I would consider it property tax relief because otherwise we'd have to borrow in order to replace the truck.
Which would mean a raise in taxes.
So about 200,000 available in lost and 119,000 in equipment reserve.
Of course, I think I can't count what these other people have.
Right, and that doesn't, whatever the township could contribute.
Whatever the township has.
And, but that would then take our lost balance essentially to zero for the property tax relief.
Don't need to talk to the township and see if they're willing to help us out, but you know.
Okay.
So we want to table it for now and?
That's what I'm hearing.
Does the association have any funds, see if they would?
They had some for a medical truck.
Yeah, right.
But I can't.
I'm just wondering about like.
They might be able to give you some.
Well, I'm ju, I, my, my point behind it is, let's say, you know, the truck is purchased, but there's some outfitting needs, you know, so that maybe the association finishes the outfitting needs because it takes something different than you had on the old truck. That's, that's what I'm addressing there is that way we don't have to build in, when we're, when we decide a number, when the council decides a number, we don't have to build in that $10,000 gray area of stuff later, you know what I mean? Maybe.
You'll need the lighter, lights.
Yeah, stuff, just whatever. I, I don't even know what all it means, so, yeah.
All right, so we will table that pending a meeting with the township, which wants, Chris will be working intermittently, so I will shoot him an email and ask if we can get that on the books. I also still have to talk to them about something else, so that'll be a good meeting. All right, new business. Item number I, Discuss Scholarship for Iowa Rural Water Association.
We talked about this a while back. I asked Chris to put this on the sk, on the agenda. Iowa Rural Water that we belong to, that, that's where I get basically all of my CEUs is from conferences that they put on and trainings, and they have equipment that we can rent when we need it and just come and give us advice when we need it for water and wastewater things. They have a scholarship program, and I don't know if any of you remember, but my daughter was awarded a scholarship four years ago when she graduated high school. Applied and mostly got it because I am an employee as a member of, you know, an employee of a, of a city that belongs to Iowa. We talked about this, about donating to this scholarship fund once before, and there was a little gray area about can we actually donate money as a city entity, but there has to be a way, because that's the only way that they drive the funds to get this scholarship put in, and I guess I, feels pretty close to home to me because my daughter, it was sizable. It was $2,500, I think she got from them the year that she was awarded that scholarship. So I don't mean to need that we need to pay that all back, but I just feel like it's worth some consideration to try and donate because the water and wastewater operators are hard to come by these days, and so the more first consideration of this scholarship are for students going into the water and wastewater field. My daughter did not. She went to design school to be an interior designer, but she fit all the other criteria and was awarded a scholarship, so I guess I'm asking if that's a possibility. I assume there has to be a way as far as the financials go to get it done because, again, that's the only way they are getting money for their, for their scholarship fund is from cities like us and other government agencies, so.
Is there a deadline on when this?
Um.
I didn't see one.
I don't see one in this letter.
You're right. I'm sure it's probably above board. I would almost prefer we wait and just have Chris do a little bit of research on it.
Find it out.
Or I can ask council to approve an amount with the condition that, you know, Chris finds out exactly how we expend that. Pleasure of the council.
I'd be more comfortable with that, Chris. I don't have a little time to think about it.
All right, perfect. So we will table that pending more information.
How many of these pointed out each year, do you know?
I felt like, I, I'm shooting off the cuff here, so don't hold me to it, but I, I was thinking it was in the neighborhood of, of six to eight scholarships, so.
Can you track that down for us later?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right, friends, we made it to page two. That is the good news.
Is it all down here?
Yeah, we're here, old business. All right. 16A, Ordinance 2022-2. This is the first reading of amendment to the Property Maintenance Code. I will say it simplifies our property maintenance code, which is currently about 20 pages long. Not quite, that might be an exaggeration, but definitely brings it in. It specifies that we will be adopting the codes as codified in the Lynn County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 105, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 6, including all future amendments and modifications thereto, and then specifies that we can set the Board of Appeals, which can either be a separate board or the council can be designated as the Board of Appeals. We would not have to make that decision tonight, so I'm just asking for motion to approve first reading of amendment to the Property Maintenance Code. So moved by Myers. Second by Bozenberg. Any discussion? Property maintenance is something that we try to follow up on. Also, oh, it does specify in, what's it here? In the 2080 agreement, which we will get to, that this does not include junk or junk vehicles. We would still be responsible for that. So this is going to be your, you know, houses with broken windows and, you know, roofs that are not shedding water, those types of things that will be better handled by the building department who has the codes and the experience behind them to help enforce.
Do we want to agree to go with this 2080 right now and then have it approved?
So when we get to that, the question is on the 2080. It's not been approved by Lynn County yet, so this, our approval is still going to have to depend Lynn County's approval of the 2080.
So we're, is it a moot point?
I want your approval for me to move forward if the county approves it. So we'll, we'll get to that in a second. And I would also say, so as mentioned earlier, we're required to do three readings. I would recommend that we at least do two readings of this ordinance, so that'll help us with next month, knowing where we stand on the 2080.
So we're waiting until next month to get to the 2080?
We could. Any further discussion on ordinance 2022-2? Hearing none, get a roll call, please.
Counselor Myers. I have, Counselor West?
Aye.
Counselor Sean's?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. 2022-3, this is the first reading of the Housing Code. Reads almost identical to Property Maintenance, in that it will be Housing Code of the City of Albertine will be the codes and regulations as codified in Lynn County Iowa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 105, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 7, including all future amendments and modifications thereto. Similarly, a Board of Appeals would be established. I would seek a motion to approve ordinance 2022-3.
So move.
Moved by West?
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Yeah.
Counselor Sean's?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Counselor Myers?
Aye. Motion carries. So we will have the second reading of both of those amendments at our next meeting. All right. Item C, Lynn County and City of Albertine Agreement for Property Maintenance Inspections. So when we received this from Lynn County, their draft actually had both of these together. It was 12080 for both programs. The language was quite confusing because there are things that apply to property maintenance that don't apply to the Housing Code, and there are things that apply to the housing and rental inspections that don't apply to property maintenance. I worked with our lawyer, and we made the decision to separate them. So what I am looking for tonight is your approval to move forward with sending this to Lynn County for their approval, and then we could actually adopt it next meeting because I don't think they'll have a problem. They offer the codes as separate codes, so I would imagine they would be okay with offering the 2080 agreements as separate agreements. So our lawyer has drafted and approved these, but we still have to get approval from Lynn
So are you seeking a motion for each of them individually then?
Yes. Primarily because the ordinances were individual, and so if we didn't, if we didn't pursue one ordinance, there was no point in pursuing the 2080. So in this case, I would seek a motion to allow me to send the draft Property Maintenance 2080 agreement to Lynn County.
So move.
Moved by Trump?
Second.
Second by, I'll get to West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Similar for rental housing. Also, I forgot, but there are a couple of highlighted things on there in that the Board of Supervisors still owes us a resolution number for some things, and then we'll fill in the date once these are approved. So the other one is for the rental housing inspection. I would seek a motion to approve by sending the draft to Lynn County to receive their approval. Moved by Trump, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're almost there. Okay, this one's fun. I like this one. All right. 16E, City Hall Renovation Project, Discuss Design and Budget Proposal. So we should be on page 38 of 43 in your packet. What you see here is the budget proposal that we received from Martin Gardner, our, the engineer that we are working on the project. These numbers are just that, they are estimates based on what they've seen on site, conversations Steph and I have had with them, the floor plans that they have drafted. As it stands right now, the project is looking to come in at about 240,000. At the bottom of that, there are some contingencies. Those purely are, some of those are, we've not finalized design, so cost of material was estimated that may go up or down depending on if we finalized the design. And then just timing of the project, they just like from a budgetary standpoint to allow us to build in just a little bit extra, but the actual cost of the projects from a bid standpoint, this will go out to public bid, would be the 240,000. That would, that is where I would expect contractor bids to come in. And then at the very, very bottom under Professional Services, you will see we've got two different phases for the architectural and then the bidding and the documents. The Phase 1, we've already, I don't know if we've paid it, but we did commit to, so that we've already agreed to. Phase 2, we did question that number. It seemed a little high at 36,000, but we worked closely. He checked with his finance person. Of that 36,000, 14 of it goes to outside services. So it goes to their mechanical engineers, their electrical, you know, the things they don't do in-house. So the other 22 would then go to MGA for the structural engineering, the interior design work, oversight of the project, you know, those types of things. And then the final 5,000 for bidding documents and reimbursables. They say it, it depends on how many requests for packets there are as far as how many documents they need to print, so that number may fluctuate. I don't expect it too much, so from a professional services standpoint, we'll end up at about 45,000 there. So we hope to land overall costs just shy of 300,000 on the project. As noted in the Treasures Report, we did receive a grant from Lynn County from ARPA funds for 141,000 and $450. So that's roughly half of the project. Super excited about that, so thank you to Guy and Chris for putting that together. Whatever words we said worked, so I'm, I'm very excited. I'm glad they saw the value in the project because it is the perfect use for those ARPA funds to allow us to put protections in place from a COVID pandemic standpoint, as well as just make a usable space for our public. Any questions on the bid? I am refraining from discussing the contingencies because, again, this is a public bid, this meeting is posted. We do expect these bids to come in around 240,000. So the interior hasn't changed, I believe we saw this at the last meeting. So there'll be, uh, we're leaving the north two bays as cold storage. Uh, we're gonna leave the bathroom facility that is there. It does not need to be ADA accessible because it will not be a public facility, but that will be there in case, you know, Guy comes in all dirty from rolling around in the mud like he does and just to clean up. And then the south half will be renovated into, um, meeting space. There'll be a small kitchenette for the staff, file storage, so it's not just, you know, stacked out in the open and keep our messes behind closed doors, uh, and then an ADA accessible bathroom, uh, as well as some chambers that will be very nice to not have to set up and take down every time just so staff has room to work. There is an exterior rendering on pages 242, or excuse me, 42 and 43. We're not doing really anything again to the north side. We will do, uh, door replacements just so it matches the new exterior and they're, they're kind of older doors, so we hope to gain some efficiencies in those bays. It's our understanding that the hardware and openers do not need to be replaced, so it'll only be door panels. So we, and the bid that you saw earlier includes full door replacement, so that will come down. He did admit that'll come down a little bit because we can reuse all the hardware and openers that are in there today. Um, our engineer, we met with him last Wednesday and he had shoulder surgery on Thursday, so we got in just under the wire, so any adjustments will come in within the coming weeks as he get, he gets back to work. The only thing that may change, um, is the, you'll notice the awning that goes over the door, uh, we did ask about, it's a very flat awning, uh, it's kind of contemporary and modern, it's a lot of what they're, what they're doing now, especially around Cedar Rapids and the Lynn County buildings. I questioned snow load and they started talking about all the overengineering that was going to have to happen and I said, can we just not? So that may change, uh, because I think that was inflating our cost more than it needed to for something that's purely aesthetic. So we may just do a standard awning that has an angle to it so the snow can not just sit there, uh, and then we don't have to worry about steel beams and supports and all those types of things. So try to be as frugal as we can with things and then put the money where it really matters to make this space usable. So that, that rendering may change just a little bit. Any questions? And Guy, correct me if I'm wrong, we, I am looking for an approval on the budget proposal so that we can, the next phase is then to lock down the design.
Yeah. So. They need your approval to move forward and finish everything up and get it tidied up.
With the proposed budget. Again, I am hoping that goes nothing but down, um, based on some of the changes that we have requested that they make, but if nothing else, I expect it to at least stay level. After we kind of pick, by design aspects, I mean, we need to pick the carpet, you know, and the flooring options and that type of stuff, so, uh, it'll be, it'll be reasonable. We're not looking high end, we're not, no gold play and toilets or any of that, so.
So marble was out.
I mean, you know.
Italian marble.
That's right. You can get the stuff that looks like marble. From a distance, it'll look good. So if there are no questions, I would seek a motion to approve the, what do we call it? The budget proposal from Martin Gardner for the City Hall renovation project.
So.
Moved by Myers?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg? All, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. All right, final comments. I'm gonna start with Counselor Trump. Any final comments on this evening?
Nice meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience.
Uh, since Chris ain't here, I guess I'll give a holiday light up. Nope. Nobody, he wasn't here, so we have ordered lights, um, like 10, 10 lights.
Plus the.
And then a banner thing going across one section and two glowing things going across the wire. And then we've ordered 12 banners that we're gonna put up that says, um, welcome Alvernet.
Welcome.
Yep, and they're kind of like snowflakes on it and blue, it's really cool. I thought I had a picture of them, but they, that's already starting to come. So anyways, that's, and it's coming underway. What, you guys have approved, so it's moving forwards. And then I think Guy and was gonna work on, uh, building, uh, some banner holders because they're expensive to buy and we think we can build them a lot cheaper, you know, so.
I've got some old ones too from banners we had in the past, so we might even be able to use.
Use some of them, so.
Yeah.
I think, what are them, about three, what is it, three foot by?
Two by four, or was it 30 inches by?
Thirty by 20, 20 or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of sharp. So we are getting new Christmas decorations.
We haven't expected a delivery date on that.
Uh, yeah, I think he said the banner was two weeks out and then, uh, the Christmas lights are being made right now. So it's, it's what Christmas definitely, so they should be here for this year. I can go when we get them up.
Awesome.
I can help.
We'll put you up in the butt.
Well, that's good, I, so.
Counselor Trump?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Uh, thanks to the fire department and all their work this past month and thank you to all the veterans in this room. Veterans, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Final comments?
I will be out town Monday for a funeral, um, so Alvernet will be unattended for Monday. I guess Jim will be around, so.
It's all on Jim.
It's all on Jim. Jim, it's all Jim's deal, so.
And we haven't got a new update on the sound yet. The electric isn't up here. We haven't got an update on that yet. So it's supposed to be Kevin, but we'll, we'll see.
Chief, any final comments?
I never thanked Guy and Jim for the day of the big house fire. They, he got the water going and helped us out the first fuel station and Jim kinda stuck around for a while and made the hydrants and the tower for us, so. I thank them for helping.
The team, I heard. The only thing I forgot to mention was, uh, recodification update, so Chris is doing his final review. He will be through, um, he was planning on by the end of this week, so I expect by the end of next week he'll, he'll get his review finalized and we'll get the comments back over to the firm and hopefully have some action items in the, in the new year to get that finalized and all cleaned up and, and published, so that'll be a nice step. We've been working on it for quite a while. Um, and then I had mentioned with meeting with the township, the other item, uh, this group has already approved is that, um, the donation agreement with the township and the fire station, or the fire association for, for anything that's good to donate it. I have not had a chance to present to them yet, so that will be our other, uh, agenda item when we meet with them for our annual meeting. All right, well, hearing nothing else, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So.
Moved by Myers.
Second.
Second by West. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? We are adjourned.